Six thirty, call the meeting quarter. Certified compliance with the open records?
Yes.
Go call please.
Councilmember Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Hartong.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Raceley.
Here.
Councilmember Schneider.
Here.
Councilmember Stokil.
Next up, the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any testes, for all.
Would some of you like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Adopted. Next, we have any public comments? Anybody contact us concerning?
No calls.
And no scheduled appearances? We move on to the consent agenda. The following management be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. The minutes from the regular city council meeting from September twenty-third, twenty-twenty.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved. Next, we move on to the mayor's report. Just a couple of things to talk about. We did have a resignation from the library board. Superintendent Greg Doberspike. According to Wisconsin state statute, the school has one representative, and it's either the superintendent of schools or that superintendent's designee. So in this particular case, with superintendent Doberspike resigning, he'll appoint somebody, his designee, and will be taking over as the school's representative on the library board. Just want to mention also that Administrator Rasmussen and I did meet with a member of the pool group to talk a little bit about their fundraising efforts, and still no major things to report, but again, we did talk about some things, and they are continuing to move forward with some of their activities and their fundraising efforts. And that's all I've got tonight. Any questions?
You don't have anything to do with approving Greg's proxy? He just keep on saying that that's it?
No, and the way the statute is written, I mean, it's our designee, and so whoever, and so he's going to appoint another staff member or somebody for administration to handle that, so, yep. Okay, any other questions? Okay, nothing off the consent agenda? Administrator's report, Administrator Rasmussen?
Specifically, I had a couple items that I wanted to touch base on. Two biggest ones being the budget process and our vacant building process. From the budget process, I think most, almost all of you have been involved in a budget meeting at this point, and Matt's the only one who hasn't, and he'll get involved next week at the finance committee level. But, so we met twice in all the public works. The first meeting wasn't, I mean, well, just about everything was budget, right? So talking about Third Avenue, Driver Street, Laneville, through that, portions of that will be part of next year's budget. So the first meeting, we spent mostly on that, and the second meeting, we did a little update or a little summary of those projects again, but then we went through all of Matt's operational and capital requests. And we also had a public safety meeting last Wednesday. Mike Miller for ambulance was not able to be there, but we did basically have a recommendation for both the police and fire budgets. We will be meeting with Mike Miller tomorrow night with the public safety committee, and then again, next week with the finance committee for, we'll call it kind of the general stuff, general administrative part of the budget, fee structures, things of that nature, and ultimately have a recommendation then to the council for a complete budget and mill rate and everything like that that we're required to have in time for a November eighteenth public hearing. Again, just for those of you that weren't at, obviously the crossing over the committee meetings, you're fair to say this is a pretty straightforward budget process this year? I say that from the standpoint of nobody's asking for new personnel, things of that nature, that will really drive our budget. It's pretty much a kind of a status quo moving forward. Obviously, that large project we talked about between Third, Third Dryer, and Laneville is a big deal and a lot of money involved, and again, we'll have more discussion on that. But otherwise, I don't think there's anything out there at this point that's really kind of hanging over our head. I guess probably the only thing, and we go through this every year, and I'm going through this every year, every place I've ever worked, is trying to get the health insurance rates for personnel, you know, as quickly as possible. Insurance companies always want to wait because they want to see how the claims are coming in, and so again, I'm still looking at getting that information by the, I'm not going to have it by the end of next week apparently, according to the representative, but clearly by the end of October, clearly a time for the final decision at the public hearing on the eighteenth of November. And so we'll see how those go, and cautiously optimistic, and everything else, I was looking pretty well. A lot of good discussions at the committee level. There's the three folks that are off the audience tonight, you can certainly chime in as well from the standpoint of involvement and good questions at the committee level, and so far, so good, in my opinion. The second specific item I wanted to touch base on is the vacant building process. So as I've been sharing with you, basically I had a September twenty-fifth deadline for folks to get their appeals in. At this point, basically, we had, I mailed out fourteen letters and appeal forms to the folks that we felt qualified under the vacant building ordinance. Actually, thirteen of them only qualified. We had one that was actually, we assumed that they had, where the building was vacant because they had no water usage for quite a number of months, and it just turned out they had a meter problem, so we solved another issue with that. So technically, they should have been on the list to begin with. So all those thirteen though that went out, three have filed appeals. Some of our usual suspects, Net Ventures, Skogmas, and was the final, actually, no, Mr. Hillard, who's been working on surprise. So we had three appeals that we received. Three basically are compliant now with the ordinance and have paid their fee and are basically moving on, one of those being the theater next door, so they were last year. So again, that will not be part of the appeals project. They paid what was required, and so they're now compliant. Two others have been in direct contact with me regarding, one of the, technically, they're both appeals, but basically, the burgers on the long ramp project are still waiting for some quotes to come in. I would anticipate I'll hear from them by the end of this week. And then basically, we have five that we just haven't gotten no response from. So the next step will be to basically coordinate that economic development meeting, whether that's late October or the first week of November, we'll work through that, and clearly, I think we'll have those before the council meeting on the eighteenth, at least a recommendation from the committee going forward, so. So any questions on that? Okay, I did want to touch base on elections just a little bit, and Andy's going to be out for a little while beginning tomorrow, so I did want to note though that I did speak at the Lions Club on Monday evening. They specifically asked me to come speak about elections, even after reporting that I'm not the elections experts in town. Basically, they wanted to ask some other questions on some things, so I thought it went pretty well. But again, the biggest thing to take from, I think, at this point in the election process is clearly, you still have time to register, you still have time to absentee vote. The in-person voting begins on next Tuesday, the twentieth, and will go through the end of the day of Friday, the thirtieth, for those people that want to come in and absentee vote in person. And basically, after the thirtieth, your only option is if you have a ballot that you mailed out, that you previously gotten, if that arrives by eight PM on November the third, it still counts. If it arrives later, it doesn't count. That's where we are at the moment. And then clearly, you can come in and vote on November the third and register if you happens. And Angie and her, Angie and Linda continue to work through that, making sure we have enough people here to take care of everything. We know it's going to be a big turnout, but I think we're in good shape, and I think Angie's done a nice job. So we'll let you know after the third, though.
If you haven't had some tea ballot to be mailed in, and you either A, don't mail it, and/or B, think it's not going to make it on time, can you come vote on the third year?
Yes, you can.
You can. You cannot mail it. That is the biggest thing. If you mail it, you cannot vote on the third. But if you have it and you're worried about it's coming, you can drop off the voted ballot year or two. You can bring it in any day and just drop it off.
What would happen if they do happen to mail it and then still come in and vote?
They can't. We already have record of it.
So if they were to come in and say, hey, can you check, I mailed it, did you get it? If we haven't gotten it, and they said that they put it in the mail, they're not allowed to vote in person. That was their ballot.
Yep. And Linda's got it on the full book, it's marked, saying that they received a ballot.
So, as I said, don't wait till the last minute. If you do, bring it down here in person. And that's again, that's no disparaging the U.S. Postal Service, it takes a while, you don't know, so.
Also like to thank the city clerk for she coming out of her shell and actually doing a radio interview to help inform the citizens. I heard you did a great job. I didn't actually do the interview, I actually didn't, but I heard you did a great job, so we appreciate that.
Brian twisted my arm.
Just, yes, sir. I'm not quite done. Okay, that's my, just a couple of, nothing's ever minor, right, but I guess I'll say it to you. I was contacted again by Evan Mercer with the ATV group, who wants to be able to talk about the bridge issue some more. Basically, I just called and said, I'd like to be on an agenda that we can talk about this. So well, typically, we put that on a public works agenda and kind of talk through it a little bit and try to figure out what, I mean, clearly, they're still looking at access to the bridge. As I pointed out, clearly, the DOT has said no, and that there's no appeal process. So I'm not quite sure where we're going through this yet, but I'll work that out with Mr. Mercer. But I did certainly want to bring it to your attention, make sure that, you know, he brought it up to you, and I know Travis has talked to you a few times, that we are pursuing it, we're not ignoring it.
I think the question is, can we, could we write a letter to the governor or somebody signed as a city council if we are all for it? Could we make that happen?
I, you know, yes, and I mean, certainly, you can make that happen. Now, whether or not that carries any weight with the DOT or whomever, or we need to get a legislator involved in the process, I think that's what Evan was kind of getting to.
The governor or a senator or whatever.
Right, whomever, yep. And then finally, we did get, we have one more, another zoning variance request on another large shed type building in the neighborhood of the last one, so we'll be getting that scheduled for the next council meeting as well, for those who've involved in that. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Back to the vacant building.
Yep.
Jamie, when this vacant building was started, processed a couple years ago, wasn't there a issue regarding access from a residence?
That'd be a fire issue, not a vacant building issue, yeah.
But it initiated there. Whatever happened to that, if anything?
Just out of standstill. At the city council, you guys would have to move forward.
Review country schools, and then the high schoolers, they got presentations by their home, but it's a good program. Brandon, it's a way for them to continue. And then I just wanted to address that, there's a pretty bad property violation that I'm sure some people have probably heard about by East Madison, or we are addressing it between Scott and I. They have till Monday to get it cleaned up, but just so you know that we are on top of it, and we're continuing to address it with the property maintenance manager, and Scott addressed it with the property owner through a letter as well, so we are on top of that, and we'll get it cleaned up as soon as possible.
And also keep me in touch with some of the concerned neighbors of what the process is and what they can expect from us, and I'm fair to say they appreciate that as well.
That's all I have. Any other questions? Any questions for the police department?
We just got a complaint for payroll today, that we seem to be in a better spot with our part timers.
We are.
Oh, did I change it?
Yeah, two of them are in the hiring process. The two that, well, one that is still in the academy, graduates this week, is a finalist for a nearby full-time job that I got a call on today, but they're looking at probably filling like mid-November or early-December, so he'll be able to hopefully help us get through. We have a lot of vacations coming up for hunting season and things like that. And then another part-timer that works a lot for us is on her second interview down in her hometown in southern Wisconsin, so they're going through processes right now, and hopefully we can hang on to them for a little longer.
And some of that was discussed at the public safety meeting with Andrew, and his comment on some goals of ours of retaining, attracting and retaining some of our part-time help.
So we'll get going on, we'll probably just start another, well, we got two people on our eligibility list, so we'll probably start backgrounds on those other two people if they're still available, and just kind of be prepared to start getting them in on some trainings in case we lose the two that we have now.
Anything else for the police department?
Are we just skipping the discussion for the truck or treat? I see that was under, I don't remember all, but.
Right after you get done with questions, yeah, right after. Anything, any other questions? Okay, now we move on to special bus collection regarding the street closure request for the Dig Truck or Treat event on October thirty-first, and the city endorsement of trick-or-treating hours. Chief?
So the plan is coming together where Dig is going to set up Truck or Treat with your guys' approval down the center of Main Street, allowing spacing between vehicles. They're requiring masks, encouraging gloves, a couple of other safety precautions, as they are discouraging from having like a giant bowl of candy and having everybody reaching the candy, and you know, they're having people hand out individual pieces of candy. Heidi from the health department stated that with the safety precautions that Dig has proposed to her, that she believes that it could be run safely and a safe event for our community, and gives the kids an opportunity to go out and enjoy Halloween, and they're looking at doing that event from three to five PM on Saturday, October thirty-first.
Any questions regarding it? Have we heard anything, I know that when we did get a representative here the last one, I know that probably participation by some of the businesses will be down because some just don't, have we heard the numbers?
Yeah, she told me yesterday, they were at thirty participants signed up for it. She said they actually had, she had sent out an email regarding masks being required and some other stuff, and then she said that some places have just decided that they didn't want to participate, they were up to about forty, and now it's down to thirty participants.
So compared to last year, the number was.
Ooh, sorry, Mayor, I don't remember what the number was last year.
Or you want forties, wasn't it?
It's in the forty somewhere.
Okay.
Not as big a event, but still, yeah.
Didn't they say they wanted a minimum number before they do it?
Yeah, they had twenty set as a minimum.
The twenty, was there? They don't have to do.
Okay, so and specifically, we have a request for the street closure. As far as setting things up, you think we got fine, we're just same as we've done in the past, as far as putting up no parking so people don't park there.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll get the signage out in plenty of time so that they know not to park there and get the street closed. I think she has it for an hour before, she has a continuum.
Two, right?
Yeah. So and then after it's all done, we'll clean up the no parking sign and then we'll.
So let's take care of this issue first. Is there any questions specifically about the Truck or Treat event?
I made the motion, we approve the street closure.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the street closure for the Truck or Treat event on October thirty-first. It's on the floor for any more discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no? Motion's agreed to. Next, we have the city endorsement of trick-or-treat hours. In the past, we've usually issued a period of time for trick-or-treating, and chief, where are we on that issue?
So on our Zoom meeting that we had on Friday with the health department and other community leaders, the health department is recommending no door-to-door trick-or-treat. They said that an organized event like Truck or Treat, they could stand behind because of the safety precautions put in place for that event, but they are stating that they are not endorsing any door-to-door trick-or-treating.
So yes, ultimately, the recommendation was like they can get behind Truck or Treat, but we're not going to endorse the door-to-door, even though.
People are still going to do it.
Right, we really can't stop, and I don't think it's going to be a case that clearly no one from law enforcement is going to be running around saying you can't do it, but from the city side of things, it's probably, if we're going to endorse something, clearly the Truck or Treat is the safest way to go per our county health director.
I believe, I'm sorry, Mayor. I believe the county health department is also, if people are going to trick-or-treat, I believe they've, have they issued guidelines?
Yeah, there are guidelines out there from the CDC.
From the CDC.
So somebody's still going to do it, you know. And like Scott had said, we had talked about it as well, and you know, I don't think the law enforcement shouldn't issue designated times, endorse it, but also like Scott said, you know, we're not going to be out there telling people they can't trick-or-treat. I guess that was our recommendation, is that we don't set times.
And I don't think we necessarily have to make a motion, because this is just something we've done in the past. It's never been the council doing it, we just always selected like usually a two or three hour period.
Right.
And stuff, and so we're saying, just saying we're not going to issue anything concerning trick-or-treating hours this year.
Basically, we say, we encourage you to participate in Truck or Treat and call that your trick-or-treating fund, so to speak.
Well, you were saying last year, you were way down.
Yeah, with Truck or Treat, I hadn't heard anyway. I usually get two hundred every year at my house. I had like forty last year. So Truck or Treat definitely did a divot on it.
You used to have the big maybe.
Yeah, and you usually get the, I think the door-to-door I got was probably the middle school, high school, little kids. The little kids do the Truck or Treat, they hit the low.
How about the end of that, they got enough.
Yeah.
And then multiple people tell me that they are going to have their way down, and they're going to do it, so.
Yep.
I'm like, if you don't want to do it, leave it like.
Hours earlier than the year for the Truck or Treat than they were last year. It seemed like it was dark by the time we got done last year, wasn't it?
Yep, the hours are earlier due to us being a Saturday.
Being a Saturday, it helps that a lot.
So that might increase door-to-door too.
I think it will.
People come there first and then.
Yeah. And I agree with Travis, what Travis said, you know, if you don't want to participate, please leave your yard lights off.
Just, yeah, just leave your yard lights off.
I think the, if I remember right, the health department still has those signs if people want to print them off themselves, I think, right? Or did they not print those?
I don't think she printed them, she showed us during the Zoom meeting, but I don't know if she printed them.
I think they were going to send, make them available for the public use though, so essentially a sign saying this, I don't even remember how it was worded.
It said no trick-or-treating.
Yeah, no trick-or-treating at this house or this address or something. And just kind of a big white sign so people could see, you know, a sheet of paper essentially that people can see, but I think it's kind of given that.
It's a light wrong.
But it's surprising, we typically don't, we trick-or-treat up at my in-laws, and we don't, at our house, and our lights are never on, and I still see tons of people coming knocking on our door, you know, from a camera or not, so that isn't always a tough sign, so.
Daylight savings is that and night as well, I believe, so it'll still be plenty dark at probably four-thirty, five o'clock, so again, with the lights off, that's, you know, we can indicate they're not participating.
Okay, anything on that issue? As I said, it's not specifically to go on record, in one way or the other. Okay, next we move on to the fire department, monthly report, Chief King.
You guys got the report in front of us, we have nine calls for the month. They're all listed there. Just a reminder, a good intent call is like something they call this and then get canceled. No car accident, actually staying with that, there was a page, jogged an accident staying out there, we weren't needed, so we turned around, but actually didn't make it to the scene, so that's what the good intent call is there. The outdoor sign, if you guys noticed, up front of the fire hall got taken out. That was a capital item from last year. So the old sign's removed, concrete's on board. The new sign will be ordered shortly, we're just waiting on the last design of it. That'll be placed on the building now instead of on a pedestal in front of the building to make it easier for snow removal and mowing operations and all the fun stuff that goes on with that. And then tables and chairs too are ordered, and it'll be here in a couple weeks, so that's also a capital heavily item approved from last year. And then I just got a couple other things that need on the record. The trucker, the Truck or Treat we're going to, and then myself and Don with the rural will be meeting this Friday about rent talk. At the rural meeting this time, we're talking about meeting every other month to get things rolling on, preventing any issues that we have back and forth to get that going. And the other thing that I did put on there for fire prevention month, we usually go to the schools and work with four K secondary graders. This year, due to COVID, we weren't allowed to be in the schools, which is totally understandable. I was contacted by Mrs. Rosemeyer, she found some videos online. So actually, last night, we spent two hours at the fire hall recording a virtual video, and we're going to be piecing a bunch of, like a ten, fifteen minute video together for the students, and the teachers are going to present that in class. We still ordered their coloring books and their small gift from the fire prevention materials shop, so the video will be done here Thursday night, and then they'll present it to the school to show in the classrooms to supplement us not being there, so. Should be pretty cool. It's going to be on YouTube, so I can share it with Scott or something, maybe send it out together. That's all I got.
Andy, where's the movement on the fire district?
Well, that's the discussion that Jamie noted with Don Hartong, that we are now specifically meeting at minimum every other month.
So that's just meaning that the district is an actual joint of the two, correct?
Right.
Is that still at a standstill, or is this monthly, bimonthly meeting?
I think it's.
Trying to push that.
As the meetings progress, I think Scott and you guys can make a decision on where to move forward. I think there's a lot of good things that are going to happen in the next month's meeting every other month. The communication level's going to get better, the relationships are going to get better. At that point, I think what's, my recommendation would just be to hold off and see where the meetings are going to with Scott, their president of the association.
The biggest thing for me, I think, Harry is, we're going to try to get to there, to that joint department. We may not get there. However, there are some equitability issues that we need to work out, and Mr. Hartong has seemed very amenable, certainly it was a discussion at the rural meeting a few weeks back, and we talked about some other, you know, some pay on both sides at our public safety meeting regarding budget, and so that's kind of the baby step, so to speak, to getting those issues worked out first, and then ultimately, if we can get there great, if not, you know, I think we're better off on the city side of things. I mean, even the rent issue that's already been taken care of now is a step in that direction.
There'll be a lot of positivity coming on in the next few weeks.
Okay, any other questions for the fire department? Hearing none, we'll move on to the ambulance. Director Miller cannot be here, but he did issue a report. Is there anything you'd like to mention on the report, highlight to Commissioner Rasmussen?
It pretty much speaks for itself, I guess I would just note though that, again, Wednesday nights are not a good night for Mike, and we knew that when we hired him, that there would be some conflicts with his existing employer. But clearly, he will be at budget meetings, par night, that many of you will be at, so if there's any questions that any of you have on his report, that you need some clarification or things of that nature, we can certainly address those tomorrow night when we meet with Mike.
Of course, one thing on the run report, again, no missed nine-one-one calls.
Correct, yeah.
And just one on transfer, so that's still, that's another good one?
We are, again, we are basically fully staffed from a standpoint of twenty-four-seven coverage, and have been for quite some time, and it was, you know, the complaints now are some people that aren't, I'd like more hours, well, you can't, we're.
I got some.
So I think it's a good place to be from where we were not allowed long ago.
Any questions on the ambulance report? Next, we move on to public works, engineers report, anything from Cedar Court?
Cedar Court, we have started the topography work on Third Avenue. Nine o'clock Friday morning, myself, Russ, Kevin Akis, and the surveyor will be walking the project. You're not walking anymore, you got a meeting at nine o'clock.
We're going to see you today.
So we'll be walking the project at nine on Friday, just so that we're kind of all on the same page, so we can all see, so we're seeing the same thing, understanding the same thing, moving forward with the engineering process. Other than that, the cemeteries moving along were within the last thirty days, I think, of that ninety-day grace period here, so we should see some improvement on that in November.
Any questions on the engineers report?
Thank you for being my personal secretary, and thank you, Jamie, for getting me out of that.
Next, we move on to public utilities, monthly report, Superintendent. Thanks to move on to public utilities, monthly report, Superintendent Gillis.
A couple things, um, I'll start with the easy things, move to the hard things. Leaves are, leaves are flying around, the guys are out sweeping leaves, uh, as best we can. Uh, the parks are all winterized, uh, winterized everything up here last week. The dock is out, uh, we're moving towards, uh, winterizing everything else up, getting all our buildings buttoned up and, and ready for the winter. Uh, dead sewer flushing started today, they'll be doing that, uh, moving forward with that type of stuff. Uh, water department, everything seems to be, uh, knock on wood, uh, status quo. Uh, now moving on to the bad news, the wastewater treatment plant, um, as it, sure, I'll do the best I can to explain this for those of you who don't understand treatment plants. So we have what's called an RBC treatment plant, rotating biological contactor. Um, an RBC is a five inch, 40 foot long shaft with media stacked onto that shaft for all 40 feet. That media is basically a 10 foot disc and then it just rotates in the wastewater 24/7, 365 days a year. And slime and bacteria grow on that media and that's how we treat the wastewater. Um, one of our RBC shafts snapped on Monday, uh, so it's a, it's gonna be a, a major undertaking to get that repaired. Uh, RBC plants are going by the wayside, um, so it's not like we can just, uh, find a shaft and, and new media, uh, on a shelf somewhere. Uh, talking to a couple people, uh, they are able to probably machine us a new shaft. Um, keep in mind as well that this weighs about 50 to 60 ton, so we need large cranes to move things around. Um, I, I don't have exact numbers, but we're looking between 100 and 150,000 dollars to repair this shaft. Uh, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, one snapped as well and to the best of my knowledge, um, from the people I've talked to, it cost about 90,000 dollars back then to repair that shaft. So, um, it is not a, it is not a cheap fix, it is not an easy fix, um, it is something that has to be fixed. So we have four of these shafts down there, so each white hot as you drive by is its, is its RBC, is an RBC with shaft and media, um, but they work in unison of two. So it's, uh, two trains of two is how we call it in the, in our industry. Basically the wastewater comes in, one RBC goes out and comes in the other RBC and then that's the treatment process. So essentially with one being down, I'm, I'm out two. So I'm out that whole, that whole train is down until we get this one fixed. So essentially I'm running at what we would, what we would call half capacity or half treatment process. So, um, nothing to be alarmed with, we're not, we're not going to, we're, we're still gonna be all our treatment needs, uh, we're, we're still gonna be under, um, all our DNR reporting. Uh, we can go a few months at no issues here especially, you know, it's a good thing we're going into the winter months because that's what we could call our low flow months, you know, we don't have a lot of rain, we don't have a lot of eye and eye kinda goes down a little bit, um, but yet now we're battling the cold weather to get this thing fixed. So, and now the other RBC is gonna be battling the cold weather, keep that one from freezing in place, you know, because we don't have a lot of movement through there, we don't have the turning through there to, to keep things from freezing. So, so we do have a couple battles on our hands moving forward. I, I don't expect you guys to all digest this all tonight, I know there's a lot of, a lot of info here, um, but it is a crucial part of the treatment process. So I'm, I'm working, hopefully by the end of this week, um, I can have some better numbers, some better ideas of what this is gonna cost and how we're going to, to do this. We've kicked pretty much everything around the last couple days as far as pulling this one out and welding it, but, you know, to do that, I gotta pull it out, I gotta hire a crane to come pull it out, I gotta take all the media off it, I gotta weld it, I gotta take it and re-machine and then I still have, you know, a bad shaft or, you know, most of, most of the shaft is still worn out. You know, the only thing that would be good would basically be where they welded. Um, so the price of doing that and taking all the media off and, and probably half of our media is probably broken because it's plastic, when it snapped it fell in, so we're gonna need half of the shaft, it's probably gonna need new media anyway. Um, so by the time, by the time we piecemeal that together, we're probably gonna be 75% of the cost of if we just did brand new to get though. Those are pure speculation at this point right now, so we're, we're looking at everything, um, from one end to the other as of tonight. It's not, uh, it's definitely not a cheap fix. Everybody around us, like I said, RBCs have been by the wayside in the last five-ish years, Ellsworth got rid of theirs, Spring Valley got rid of theirs, Elmwood got rid of theirs, Eau Claire got rid of theirs and Mondovi's in the process of getting rid of theirs. So, um, they're not, they're kind of, it's, it's, they're kind of a dying breed for the, for the Midwest because they're not great cold weather treatment plants, you know, they thrive best, you know, in that, in that heat.
When they, uh, sorry man, but when they got rid of those, the, the companies that did it, wouldn't they have a shaft?
So I called two of those towns and they said when they took them out, they cut them, scrapped them and threw them in a dumpster because there was no need to save them or no need to keep them to basically laying in the weeds just in case. So they all, they all said it basically was a scrap, the media got taken off and thrown in one dumpster and, uh, and the shaft basically got cut up and thrown in metal dumpster.
Is, uh, are they all basically the same size and?
No, so that, that's, that's the other key, is they're sized to, they're sized to what you want to achieve. And then there's also three different kinds. There's chain driven with what we have, there's air driven and then there's direct drive. So you can't take an air driven shaft and put it on a chain, you can't take a chain and put it on a direct and so, and then they're all, the lengths, they're all different based on what each town's needs actually were. So that, that's the one thing about wastewater treatment is it's not, you know, treatment plants are not cookie cutters, they're all based on the specific needs of that town. So like for example, Eau Claire had air driven shafts, so we couldn't use their shafts because we have chain. So, and the two towns that I knew had chain, I called them, asked what they did with the shafts and that's what they said was they just chopped them up and scrapped them out.
How about the contractors that did the work, maybe some of them saved some?
I did not ask them who the contractor was, like, I got to make a phone call with him.
I know, three or four.
Yeah.
So I get you some digging.
So.
Worth it to try, I guess.
Yeah, it, I'm not, it's, it's all it is, a phone call.
You know, maybe, maybe they, they, when they went in there to replace the system, there was a newer RBC, you know, sitting there that they said, well, let's just save the shaft, you know?
Do you have an idea of a machinist around here that could do that or do you have somebody?
So the crane engineering, the company that I use to kinda do a lot of my, um, major components to the tubing plant, um, they're basically only one, there's, there's, I don't wanna say there's only one machinist there, but the one company that kinda specializes in RBC type of work from kind of soup to nuts is the Walker. So they're kinda working with them to get some prices on, on what we're gonna do to replace that shaft. Um, I'm not a hundred percent sure, you know, I know there was a Schneider or Schroder out in Bay City that used to do some machining, he actually did some work on some of our RBC shafts, um, but the numbers I have for him are, uh, no longer in use and I had heard he had some health issues and kinda got out of doing that, so. Uh, there was a guy by the name of Lou Andowski, um, of RBC services who, who did some work for us in the past too. Uh, he got bought out by this Walker, so he's no longer in business either. So every, every channel I've had so far is basically funneling me to one resource.
And I'm guessing this crane is doing a part, a huge portion of that project.
Yeah, so that, that's kinda another reason why, why, you know, because if, if we did brand new shaft and brand new media, we can get that all set up and we can bring a crane in one day, pull the old one out, set the new one in. If we do anything else, I gotta get a crane in for one day to pull all the old stuff out and decide what we're gonna do and then bring a crane back to put the new stuff in. So we're, we're working through all those prices. I don't, you know, uh, I don't have the crane company's prices and whatnot all in front of me. That's what, you know, hopefully by the end of this week, maybe middle of next week, we'll have a better picture of what's gonna happen.
So if we, I'll go through all, all of our resources about anything that we could get redone by somebody and we have to have one, uh, machined for us, so what type of timeline are we talking?
We're probably in that.
Estimate, yeah, just an estimate.
Three month window-ish as an estimate, that's what we talked about on the phone here the other day.
Is this budget money meant that you move forward without coming to council each step along the way?
So this would be a, uh, this is not in the budget, so I have no money in the budget to pay for this, so as far as probably pay for this, I, I'll pump that one.
We're gonna say we'll be, we'll be talking about this, um, at our upcoming budget meetings. Maybe we need to have another, even public works meeting to talk through this a little bit more. Um, clearly there's some chance that maybe we have to raise those sewer rates a little bit higher than we thought, even if this is a, just frankly, I've been talking, Mayor and I talked a little bit before the meeting, Matt and I talked through this as well. I'm thinking this is, you know, potentially a borrow from the general fund. Again, this is the, exactly on the utility of the rate payers and so if you make that a 10 year payback, there's something in the back, what would the rates have to be to make that work? I mean, clearly we have nothing to unbalance and then we just go, be paid back right back to the general fund through the sewer, sewer operations, so.
At probably a lower interest than what we would get at the bank.
Well, clearly, I mean, yeah, you know, yeah. So that, that, that would be one option, again, I think we have, we have the money available to do that. Um, and again, it's, it's easy, it's cheap, we don't pay borrowing rates and things of that nature, but, uh, I guess that's one of the pieces I would note, again, this is, you know, Matt's been talking about this for a while. We were invited, uh, I don't know, six, six, eight months ago, we were invited over to Mondovi to look at their new system, basically there was kind of a demonstration type thing. So as Matt noted, Mondovi's got a current system like we have, um, and they're being forced to go to a different system because they're not meeting the numbers that the DNR, you know, that they, they need to from the DNR standpoint. Their system just isn't working anymore. But, you know, even at that time, Matt's like, I gotta get some of this equipment potentially for our future, um, you know, I think, you know, for, you know, we might need it if we can get it at a reasonable price. And so, you know, clearly this is, this is the rationale behind that. And, I mean, we, things are going, Matt, our sewer plant won't take it for another 10 years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seeing anything. I have zero plans for the next 10 years to 15 years, you know, don't, don't hold me to those numbers, things can change next year, but, you know, our permit just got renewed, uh, in 2020, this is our first year, it's a five year permit, so it's 24 or 25, I forget if it was renewed 19 or spring of 20. Um, but basically 24, 25 before we gotta do a new permit. So basically the permits from the DNR are basically gonna, two things drive new treatment plant. New permit limits from the DNR that your plant can't meet or the fact that your plant is, is so maintenance intensive, um, that it just doesn't pay to keep repairing it. We are not in either one of those boats yet. You know, I mean, yes, we're talking about 100, 150,000 dollar fix here, but to get 10 years out of it, it's, it's, it's a well, it's well worth it. 10 to 15, it's well worth it. So, you know, we're not really in either one of those boats as of right now, um, to say that we're gonna jump into a new treatment plant in the next 10 to 15 years. Is it on the horizon, you know, 15 to 20 years out, more than what you please?
Was, was the wear on the shaft evident or just, do you, do you not know it?
No, the, the shaft is basically packed in media and rotating in water all 24/7. The only parts of the shaft I can see are the first three feet which, that, which is attached to the bearing on either end and it snapped in the middle. So there's, there's absolutely nothing we could or could not have done to prevent it.
What, what are the age of the other shafts compared to the one that snapped? Are they all asshole?
Yes, the, this, past history that I've been told is, um, the two shafts, this one and the one directly across from it, the primary, basically the lead RBCs where the, where the flow first comes in, those are the two heaviest, um, shafts. Both of those have snapped, um, I think one snapped in like 93 or 95 and then one was around that 2,000 give or take a few years in there. Um, tho- those two have been, each been fixed once. So could, could another shaft snap in six, to get your, could another shaft snap in six months? You bet.
But both, both the shafts that snapped are in the primary ones?
Yes. So the secondary, the secondary shafts that don't see as much weight, um, to my knowledge, and I haven't seen the records that would prove otherwise are, um, are, uh, same age as treatment plant, which is 40 years.
So you're confident, but not too confident, we'll make it three months in, in the middle of the winter, won't have any freeze up problems and processes of transitioning?
Well, I can't, I can't, yeah.
So worst case scenario, what if the next train snaps the shaft?
So if we snap the shaft on, on the train that's working, I guess worst case scenario is what we do is, is the crane comes ASAP, we take one of the, one of the secondary shafts off the other train, put it as the primary shaft and get it, and get one train up and running within a day or two.
How long can it be down?
I would not want it down for much more than that, you know, we're rolling in, we, we treat 400,000 gallons of, of sewage a day, so, um, between my clarifiers and, you know, some pumping things in circles, I can, I can manage about a day or two, so. I've thought about that as well, that that'd be my, that's my plan. If, if one of the other shafts were to snap in the next three months, then we take, we basically piecemeal the two that we have together and make one train work. But let's, let's hope that that doesn't happen.
But it's good you have a plan to deal with this. Okay, any other questions on the, um, this particular, um, situation we're dealing with? Anything else, Matt?
Uh, no, Matt, unless you have any questions.
Any other questions?
I tried to get out of this meeting without talking, but he wouldn't let me.
Okay. Okay, that's, uh, don't you, uh, works meeting?
That would be superior to my, my, from the project.
Oh, okay, so wait until we find the end of this, yes, sir. Uh, anything else in the public works utilities? As we said, that's pretty much it, I'm so, okay. Um, if not, let's pay the bills. Just a reminder to talk about our upcoming meetings, uh, tomorrow night at 5 o'clock and we'll be having another meeting in the safety to do the budget for the ambulance, um, uh, so we can do that. Um, and then also, um, there will be a, um, a housing committee meeting before the next council meeting at 4, that's for an application we received.
Before the finance meeting.
Before, and then, then we're gonna have the finance meeting, um, and then of course the regular, um, before the finance meeting and then the call up meeting is the next meeting and so on. And, uh, uh, the folks that sit on that, um, qualification, uh, for that. And I hear this application's a little bit different because it's, it's gone through the state because of the.
Dollar amount, yes.
Because of the dollar amount of stuff, so. I think that's the first we had since I.
First one I remember, it's been a while.
Uh, are there any other need for any other meetings at this point?
Let's just say we'll get, uh.
Oh, you said zoning was gonna, or, um.
The zoning, the zoning meeting will, will get set up before the council meeting on the 28th and, uh, and, yeah. The zoning, the zoning meeting will, will get set up before the council meeting of the twenty-eighth and, uh, and, yeah, we'll, we'll work on that big and early.
Did anybody else have any other future agenda I noticed that we, uh, need to be bringing up? We pretty much knew all of our numbers right now, savings for, share revenue savings for transportation. We've got a pretty good idea on everything. Um, it's just basically the, um, healthcare, the, uh, the health insurance costs. And that's a big thing.
Yeah, no, no surprises from the states at this point. Pretty good.
Have we got any estimate from the, the insurance company or other people are coming in or does everybody start waiting like we are?
Everyone's waiting like we are, yeah.
I say I didn't do to even this type of thing, but.
Question, other people have some energy bills?
Yeah.
Yep.
Why do they separate it up for like here and the three?
There's a meter.
We get multiple, they, we have one. We are waiting for a copy of the bill.
I just thought I'd, I thought I'd see another one come through.
You did. You stopped it.
Maybe stop paying it altogether.
That's one you don't wanna stop paying because then they shut you up.
Somebody like you made a motion to approve the voucher. We have a motion in second to approve the vouchers. Roll call please.
Councilmember Schofield.
Yes.
Councilmember Schneider.
Yes.
Councilmember Raisler.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker. Councilmember Harton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gillis.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion's agreed to. They are approved. As we said, all the meetings on there, uh, if there's nothing else, I'll move to adjourn.